Your life.
Good morning. This is the Board of County Commissioners Board of Work Session. It is Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. It is 9:02 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina McHia, the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Tyne Menser, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards are in the boardroom. County Manager Ramiro Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell in the boardroom as well. And Dennis Osorio, our IT Director, is here with us, as well as some other staff members. The topics on today's agenda is Information Technology Cloud Strategy Briefing. And this is an informational session. So with that, am I handing it straight to Dennis or to you, County Manager?
Just a little bit of a background. As you may recall, during the budget process, you had somewhat of a conversation about cloud strategy. And at that point, we directed that a formal briefing should be put in place to explore this option. So this is really the beginning of the conversation related to the cloud strategy here in Thurston County. Assuming recall, it's not all, you know, all inclusive. There has to be somewhat of a balance. And I believe Dennis is going to walk us through what the balance could be moving forward using this strategy, this technology. Dennis?
All right. Thank you, Ramiro. Dennis Osorio, IT Director, and Sherry Elgar, IT Manager, is also joining us. So we could jump right into the presentation. Sherry, you want to? So as stated, this is our Thurston County cloud strategy. What are the next? Okay. So first off, I just kind of wanted to give some background on what some cloud architectures are. Because I think sometimes that's not clear on when people say we're going to put things into cloud. So this is a real simple graphic, kind of shows on premise, which is kind of traditional, which is a lot of what our systems are. And we essentially manage the entire stack from top to bottom. It's in our data center down in the basement. And then as you move to the right, you could see that the responsibility shifts. So as you go into infrastructure as a service, about half of the stack is managed by, would be managed by us. The other half of the stack would be managed by a vendor. And as you continue on platform as a service, more vendors support, and then software as a service, which is really one of our biggest areas that we've been getting into as we're replacing our large applications. We're really looking at software as a service. I think you get the most from that as having the full stack managed by the vendor. You also get some specifics on staying with the current version. Because you're kind of, the vendors drive in that version. So I think that happens a lot with on-premise systems. Either we're not, we don't have the time to do a version update, or maybe, you know, there's budgetary constraints. And then you end up with systems that are highly out of date, and you kind of end up stuck in an area. With these software as a service systems, you got, the vendor kind of sets the pace. They let you know when they're doing the updates, but you have to stay up to date on them. So some pros and cons to cloud strategies in general. The pros are increased availability, scalability, capacity. I think that's, that's kind of the biggest thing in the cloud, in the cloud realm. It's essentially on demand, right? So you can kind of get as much resources or as little resources as you want. That can be both a pro and a con. Obviously, if there's not good governance around it, many systems can get spun up and the cost can get really out of control. You get better physical security since you're normally in one of the large data centers such as AWS or Microsoft. Disaster recovery backups are normally built in, and it's kind of a pay-as-you-go model. So it kind of moves a lot of infrastructure. If you think of it from a budgetary perspective, it would move a lot of infrastructure stuff over to maintenance and operations as opposed to like a reserve fund. Because you're doing it on, everything turns into a maintenance and operation mode. Some of the cons, as I stated, increased cost, security and privacy. I know sometimes that's often looked at as that's just a pro, but that's not necessarily the case. When you put things in the cloud and you cannot understand the architecture, you could have some issues with security and privacy. Lack of control, your connection dependence. So if the internet or connection was to go down, all of your systems will be down. Since you won't have, you know, if we were to move everything, for example. And then you have limited control over outages. Obviously, you're at the kind of the whim of the vendor. So looking at Thurston County currently, this is kind of our snapshot on where we are right now. And as you can see, we're kind of in the main two ends of this. We have a lot of obviously on-prem systems, 236. Some of those systems will never go away. They're like either infrastructure systems or servers that we would need on site, even if we were to migrate the majority of everything to the cloud. But then if you look on the right, we have 23 software as a service systems. And this, this includes some of our large applications that are currently in flight. This is the ERP and permitting, which we're leaning towards, obviously, as a software as a service architecture. And I'll get into the two middle ones as we get further down. So going into our approach, our first phase one, I kind of broke this into three different phases. Our phase one is what we are, our plan that we already have in place. And that is to analyze all of our large applications, determine which ones need to be replaced, replaced, and kind of look at them from a cloud-hosted software as a service mindset first. Obviously, if one, some of these applications came forward and they did not fit this, we're letting the business requirements drive all the architecture. But if, we're trying to get all of them to software as a service, as I said, to make sure we're staying up to date and getting the best architecture for our, for our end users. During that time, obviously, that's one to three years. These are rough, one to three years because things can shift a little bit. But we're hoping to have the majority of those systems at least in flight or being upgraded. We're also going to be looking at all of our data onsite and doing identification, organization, and cleanup. This is huge to really shrink our footprint. And I think that's kind of what came up with this conversation first came up. We were buying some infrastructure to have a lot of our data hosted that we needed to replace onsite. This is really driven by the business. They, they need to be involved. They need to, they're, they're their data owners. They need to help with the organization and the cleanup. Obviously, you don't want us just going through and deleting everything. And we'll be working with the business. We've already started some of these conversations, but all the various areas throughout the county to essentially get down to what data they actually need. Because you don't want to move a bunch of stuff you don't need to a cloud architecture and have to pay for it. And then our third big bullet that we're going to be looking at in the first three years is getting a copy of all of our data off of our backup system and in cloud storage somewhere. This will allow us to essentially get it hopefully out of the region, which is kind of best practice in case a terrible disaster was to happen. We would have a copy of all of our data somewhere else in the United States that we would be able to then spin up if we needed. Our phase two approach, that's where we'll really be looking, I think, at those middle two architectures, which is infrastructure as a service and platform as a service. We'll be analyzing everything that's left after these first three years. So that's all of our data that's left. That's any of our hosted systems that didn't fit a cloud architecture. And we'll be working through requirements to see at what architecture would fit and what would make the best sense for the county, both from business requirements as well as financial obligations. And then our, and another big thing with this is to develop an exit strategy for the cloud. So I, I don't think I could stress that enough. A lot of these cloud vendors, they'll come in and they'll say, we'll move all of your stuff to the cloud for free. Because it's almost impossible to get it back out. So it's either very impossible to get it back out or very expensive. So we need to make sure that we come up with that upfront so we don't end up kind of cornered in a, in an environment that we don't have an exit strategy for. And then our phase three will be migrating all those data, all the data, identified data, application workloads to whatever architecture that best matches it. And then kind of doing this plan, do, check, act, continually reevaluating all of our infrastructure and systems and leveraging what we can going forward. Some major considerations to think about as we move more stuff to cloud-hosted environments. We may need a direct connect, cloud direct connection that normally direct connects all the way up to Seattle and connects you to all the cloud vendors. I put that on there because it is not cheap. It's essentially giving you a direct connect fiber line all the way to Seattle. So then you can traverse and not have latency. We'll obviously need to continue our, our training internally to understand what cloud architectures are, make sure that we can set them up correctly, make sure we set up correct governance going through that process. And then we'll need a cloud storage management solution. And this is something, just as you get more, more workloads in the cloud, that would help with a lot of the governance and managing all these different workloads, depending on whether they're in different cloud providers or in different, different, different regions, different data centers. So with that, going into our conclusion, this is kind of our phased approach over the next five years. I don't think it kind of corners us into anything. We're going to really let the business requirements drive this. I think that's one of the, another mistake often made. People get caught up with the architecture or technology, and they just move everything to it. And I don't think that's the correct approach. It really needs to be a hybrid approach on what best meets the county's needs. Once again, I point out the data cleanup in organization. Obviously, that is extremely critical, and we need to partner with all the business units to do that. I think that also helps with, you know, just not keeping, not keeping data that you don't need could also be a liability. So we'll continue to work through all, all the offices and departments to help them with that. Let business requirements drive our adaptation or adoption, sorry. And then continue to just plan, do, check, act, really an iterative approach. Every year, relooking at what architectures are out there. Obviously, technology is changing all the time. But just being able to kind of be flexible and agile when it comes to that. So that's our cloud strategy. I wanted to leave sometime in case there was any specific questions because I.
Thank you, Dennis. Can you stop sharing the screen, please? Thank you. So questions on this? Let's jazz it up a little. We'll start with Commissioner Menser, and then I'll go to Commissioner Edwards. Questions, Commissioner Menser?
Only question I have really is, you know, the, when we talked about the funding issue for some of the replacement architecture, infrastructure, I don't remember all of what it was, but we, where this discussion kind of launched, there was interest, Commissioner McHia in particular, but interest from the board about cloud. And I'm just wondering, is this kind of where you were headed anyway? Or is this kind of responsive to feeling like the board wants to go toward the cloud? And this is your, this is your recommendation as to how to do that? Or were you, or do you think this is kind of the right way to go anyway? I mean, is this kind of where you were thinking? Or I'm just trying to wonder if you're trying to meet the board's needs? Or if this is kind of the right direction from, you know, IT best practices kind of thing?
No, that's a, that's a great question, Commissioner. Commissioner, this was the direction we were already heading. So this, we hadn't necessarily formalized it. So one other thing to note is I did take this and I actually added it to our strategic plan as well. So there's a section in there about cloud strategy. It was on the list to formalize it more, but obviously, we were already going this direction. We were already looking at all of our large applications, kind of going with a cloud-first architecture. And then, like I said, I really want the, the business requirements to drive it. I don't want to come in and just move everything that the county has to the cloud because I don't think that's the right approach. So it was just this hybrid approach, and we just kind of went through these phases and kind of spelled it out a little bit more detail.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Commissioner Edwards?
You had mentioned something about a direct connect up to King County. What did you mean, like a dedicated fiber optic line or?
Yes. Yeah, that's exactly what it is. So if you end up having a lot, I think it works more if we've got, and if you remember the little chart that I had pulled up, the infrastructure and platform as a service. So where they're, you know, where we're having a lot of workloads probably hosted by AWS, which is Amazon or Microsoft. You normally don't want to traverse just regular internet connections with that. So you would, yeah, you get essentially a fiber connection. It varies, the price varies on the speed you want. And it goes all the way up to Seattle, and there's a hub in Seattle that would direct connect you to all of the main cloud providers. As I said, it's not cheap.
That's what you're advocating for, to do something like that?
I'm saying if we get further down the line and that's a need, that that would be something that I would bring forward. I don't think, we do not need that currently though.
About, I don't know, you probably know this, about 20 years ago or something, the State Health Department connected all the counties together with fiber optics. Do you know anything about that? Could we utilize that?
Yeah, we currently have fiber running through our county, and we, and we connect to the state data center. And we have the IGN and PGN, which is kind of the, the government networks that we're connected to. I don't know if we would definitely be able to use that. Like, that was just a consideration that we may have if we end up having latency and we end up having too much workloads not onsite.
And does your total program eliminate the hack ability or locking up information? I don't know what you might refer to it as, but it becomes debilitating at some point.
You mean from the cyber, cybersecurity?
Yes, yes.
Cybersecurity? Yeah, I, I think I mentioned this before, but I, cloud technologies does not eliminate the cybersecurity risk. That is going to be a constant risk. We'll continue to get better. We'll continue to put in tools. That's just a continual fight that the county is going to have to do, along with everyone in technology. Because as new technology comes out, new bad guys are doing things against it. So we just need to continue to stay on it and continue that iterative approach with that.
And you mentioned something about putting it in, putting it in the cloud for a cheaper price, but you can't get it back out or something like that. So what does that entail? I mean, can you put it in three different repositories around the country or something? So that, you know, you have access to it no matter what?
Sure. Yeah, you could put it, that is one of the things about cloud technologies and infrastructure. That's kind of their big selling point, is their resources are as flexible as you want. I was saying that as a lot of cloud provider, for a price. Oh, yes. Everything's for a price. That is correct. I was saying that it's often cheap, you know, cheaper, sometimes even free to migrate a lot of data to the cloud. But when you want to turn around and pull, say, you know, we, if, most of you have been around for quite some time, you've seen either decentralization or centralization of computing. It kind of comes and goes in waves. So say in another 20 years, everything's going back to on-premise. It's going to be very expensive to try to pull that data all the way back at that point. So we just need to make sure that we understand that and come up with an exit strategy that's appropriate for that.
And the funding mechanism, that would be my.
And the funding.
So how are we going to pay for it?
Correct. If there's any, as we go through this, obviously, the first phase, we already have all of the funding lined up, right? That's the large application replacement. Anything else that came that, that we wanted to move to a cloud architecture, we would, the funding would be another concept that we would have to take into account as we, as we either decide to go that route or keep it on premise.
Is there a dollar amount associated with that?
It all depends on how much data and how big you're moving and, you know, where it's at. So it's very flexible. It's not a flat rate.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and comments, Dennis. First, on the pros and cons that you listed out. And, and so my comment is, you know, some of those costs that you listed are, are also costs that we're currently facing right now with the systems that we have in place and with, you know, just the on-premise system that we have. So I see a lot of intersectionality of some of the same issues that we would be dealing with. My, you know, when Homeland Security came and reviewed the auditor's election process and, you know, this conversation started because it was one of the recommendations that they did is that, you know, we really should be, as a county, on the cloud. It's better security. And so in terms of, of that and their recommendation, right? From them reviewing our systems and, and not being impressed with them. You know, I, I'm just pointing out some, some of that. My question is, the prosecutor I know, his office is on the cloud. He was one of the first offices to go on there. And I've heard great things come from his office with the systems that are on the cloud. I've heard that it's been working that great with them, especially as they've been working from home and, and have, you know, just have a little bit more spread out offices. And so I'm wondering how, you know, they paid for that? Because I know the cost is a big part of this. And so I'm wondering, when, when they upgraded to, to the cloud systems, how did they pay for that? And what was the timeline of that?
So when you're talking about, you're talking about the prosecutor's office, are you talking about their case management system?
Yes. And I believe before that, they, they did something that they moved on to the cloud. I, I remember that they were, there was a huge debate whether they would stay on-premise and, or whether they would go on the cloud. And I know Prosecutor John Toonheim decided he wanted to be on the cloud.
That's their, 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 their case management, that was one of the large application replacements. That was one of the first ones that we did. And we moved that to a software as a service architecture, which is hosted in the cloud. The other comments about it being more secure, I mean, architecture is only as secure as you make it. So just because something's in the cloud, that's why I did put physical security. But that is only physical security. And to be honest, most cybersecurity threats, they do not, they're, they're not coming from a physical security perspective. They're coming from design and governance. So that, so wherever it's hosted, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that it's higher security. As far as the prosecutor's office, as I said, they were one of the first ones in the software as a service application. It's prosecution and defense, and we moved them to a cloud architecture. And I think for specific applications, it does make a lot of sense. That's why we're kind of looking through all of our large applications and going with a software as a service, cloud-hosted first. Look at these replacements. I think it's different when you start saying we're going to move all of our file structures or all of our data or everything that we possibly use. It gets a lot more complex when you start using, when you start saying that, and then it doesn't necessarily, you don't get a lot of benefit from it.
So can I go back to one of your points where, where, you know? So are you saying the recommendations that Homeland Security made to us, that they were incorrect?
I don't know any recommendations that they said that we needed to go. I've never seen any audit that said we needed to go to a cloud-first solution since I've been here. And I've never even experienced that in any audit in my career because that would be, without having business requirements, that you're just selling architecture. So I don't know why that would be the case.
Hey Dennis, we did conduct an audit a couple of years ago in our system as a whole. And as a result of the audit, and I think that's probably perhaps Commissioner McHia is referring to, what are the findings of that? Do you recall? Because we did conduct an audit in coordination with Homeland Security, I believe. And it was a, a pretty, even we needed to, the findings needed to be part of a public hearing, as you may recall. But there were some findings in there. Do you remember what those were?
Yeah, we've had numerous audits specifically since I've been here, both with Homeland Security as well as the State Auditor's Office. Going forward, saying any cloud architecture-specific recommendations. So that's why I was, I was just thrown off by that. A lot of them are normal. I think more maturing of the process. So it's more, you know, it's a lot of infrastructure. It's a lot of said, you know, some examples would be make sure we're setting everyone's passwords to expire. Make sure we're not using shared accounts, encryption at rest, encryption at flight. A lot of those type of concepts, not necessarily architecture-specific content, concepts.
I seem to remember the audit report differently. Specifically about, it was, you know, they specifically made it about the auditor's systems and the election systems, but.
Those, those essentially are cloud-hosted. We don't manage those. The main, the main election system is hosted by the state. So we're just a user of that. So it's a, I mean, it's a similar architecture when it's software as a service. It's just not necessarily a, it's a state system that's centralized there. So we wouldn't have any control over that anyways if we wanted to move it to something else that we're just users of that system.
Yeah. No, I remember, just because the auditor, this was one of her concerns when it came down to elections and her trying to move her systems, all of her systems through a cloud system. And, and so that's why, and I remember that coming from that report. But those are my questions. Again, some of the cons that are listed out there are issues that we're dealing with now. You know, I think the increased cost, I mean, there's a lot of increased cost with the systems that we have in place now. Security and privacy, the connection dependency on that. And as well as the no control over outages. I mean, those are, those are issues that we deal with now as a whole in the county. So, but I like the approach that you're taking as a hybrid approach for now and looking into the future and doing it as a phased approach. I wasn't expecting something to be turned around from one day to another because that, that just wouldn't be realistic. But as we move forward. But as we move forward, doing it as a hybrid approach does seem reasonable. I just really don't want to be reliant on on premises applications. It's not the way that we're really moving into the future.
Yeah, no, I would agree. And that's why, I mean, I, that first phase, I mean, that's going to move a lot of our footprint off of a lot of our on premise infrastructure. Those are all of our big business applications. And we are looking at those being like a cloud hosted, software as a service environment. I think as you get down that stack and as you further get mature the organization, we'll have to let the requirements drive that. And obviously, funding will be a big part of that as well, if, what makes sense.
It is 9:28. Any additional questions or comments?
Just one other quick thing. I didn't hear a dollar amount that Commissioner McHia had asked about the prosecutor, how they pay for it, or how much did it cost? What, what was that question again?
Do you mean just for that application?
Yeah, when they, when they moved to the cloud, I guess the best way.
Yes, I want to say it was, I believe it was close to half a million for implementation and then their ongoing costs are close to 400,000. And that was, that was in the large application replacement fund. That, that's how, that's how we funded that.
In this part of the internal, internal rates?
Internal service rates, correct. And that's what, that's all of those large applications have that funding mechanism. We're already collecting on those and replacing them.
Thank you. Okay, 9:29. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Sherry, for being here this morning. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.